Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wellington Board of Education meeting. It is Tuesday, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. We are holding the meeting for order exactly at seven o'clock. We invite you to join us for the budget.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God. In the middle with a teaching chest.
We've got some here with us this evening. We'll be starting with fall this evening.
You guys want to see halls or do you want to?
On April fourth, the school will hold a dance for all seventh and eighth grade students. The dance will be in the cafeteria from seven to nine P M. There will be a photographer to take photos and a D J. Cell phones will not be permitted. Permission slips will be due by March thirty-first.
For the first time in thirteen years, the boys' basketball team has completed an undefeated season, culminating in a thrilling championship victory. The team demonstrated incredible teamwork, skill, and perseverance throughout the season, leaving fans and opponents in awe. From the first buzzer to the final play of the championship game, the team remained unstoppable, with a perfect record in both regular season and playoffs. This achievement marks a true testament to the players' dedication, the coaching staff's leadership, and the community's unwavering support. The championship game was a spectacle highlighted by a series of fast breaks, defensive stops, and clutch shots that ensured they finished their season on top. While the boys were achieving greatness, the girls' team was also making history in their own right. After years of struggle, the girls' team returned to the playoffs for the first time in years, making the end of a long drought. Their hard work, determination, and team spirit helped them secure a spot in the postseason. And they give it their all, showing that anything is possible with dedication.
The Eastern Region Music Festival will have rehearsals on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, and perform on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at Colchester High School. Select kids from the band and choir who audition will perform. Show your support for these hard-working kids.
This year's spring musical will be the Lion King Junior. We'll be performing on May second in the evening and midday Saturday, May third. We are hoping for a great turnout this year, so come and show your support.
The eighth grade is doing a Monson's fundraiser to offset the cost for any student who is going on the Washington, D C trip. The fundraiser is running from February twenty-first to March fourteenth. The orders are going to be available for pickup between April seventh and the eleventh in the H M S office.
The fifth and sixth grade band, seventh and eighth grade band, jazz band, fifth and sixth grade chorus, seventh and eighth grade chorus, and chamber chorus will be performing at the Evening of the Arts. The Evening of the Arts is scheduled for Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, and the doors will open at five-thirty. There's a, there will also be the whole school's artwork on display for all to see.
Thank you and have a great day. Falcons out.
So that was the regular one, and there is, it is Board Member Appreciation Month, March is. So they did, made some bookmark for you. They have a sign and a card. One of the groups decides to do a video for you, so I'm going to play that as part of their. It's here.
I would like to thank the Board of Ed for supporting clubs. I'm part of the Drama Club. Without your funding and the support, drama wouldn't be the way it is. I am also thankful for the helpful teachers.
We are so grateful for the Board of Ed because they have kept this school running for a long time by paying the bills and upgrading our classrooms. Without you paying the bills, we would not be here. We appreciate you.
Thank you for our sport teams and new quality materials and keeping this school nice.
I'd like to thank the Board of Ed for supporting Drama and giving us all the supplies to make the show happen. I would also like to thank you for the helpful teachers.
I am thankful for the Board of Education because you hired such helpful teachers and they helped me so much and they are so nice. So thank you.
Thank you for our sports Board of Ed.
This basketball season was beyond great. We had so much fun and support from you guys and we had such an amazing time. From twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, we had no team, but thanks to the Board of Ed, the, the next year we had one. Thanks to everyone's support this year, both teams made the playoffs considering that the girls' team hadn't made the playoffs since twenty thirteen. That's twelve years. Thank you for all our support and help.
This soccer season was the best. We had an amazing team thanks to you guys. We also did not have a soccer team last year, and thanks to you guys, we all bonded and we played our best and it was super fun.
Thank you, Board of Education, for supporting clubs. If we did not have drama, we could not celebrate all their wonderful achievements. Thank you.
Not sure what the lobster was in that video.
And they were petting it, the lobster.
There was a, it's a nice. All right, let me pull up. Center School, here we go.
Mister Phillips started the climbing unit in P E. It was a lot of fun.
On Monday, February twenty-fourth, was National Theater for Children. Theater for Children gave a performance on dental hydration for kindergarten hygiene for kindergarten and first graders. The performance talked, the performers talked about the importance of brushing your teeth twice a day, how to prevent cavities by flossing every day, and proper nutrition. Every C E S student re- reserved, received a bag with a toothbrush, toothpaste, and a dental. Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, was Teddy Bear Day and.
Thursday, February twenty-seventh, was a spirit day. It was second grade's turn to vote, and they picked rainbow colors day.
Rainbow Color Day was also family literacy night. Families were invited to come in in their pajamas from six-thirty to eight to play phonics, phonics and fluency game, learn, earn prizes, and hear stories from our new reading curriculum. We celebrated Read Across the Mary, uh, Day on March thirty. Mister Stevens, Miss Chrisanis, Miss Chrisen, Miss Cushion, Miss Fox, and Miss Pilate, Mister To, Corney, and Mister Cozy, the new Wellington Public Library Director. We all guessed readers. Every class, class had a turn to read in the cozy chairs in the main lobby.
I got the floor.
March is Board Member Appreciation Month. As the Board of Education students, representatives at seven school, we thought to thank the Wellington Board of Education for making important decisions about our school, like what we learn for, making the rules, managing the money, like fixing our playground, making sure our school is safe, and listening to our community. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Um, we can probably go home and this is how I can go to bed.
We don't have. To read your favorite book, right?
All right, next up, um, we have our P T A report and it's McKinnon is going to do that for us tonight. Hi, Melissa.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So we're just changing it up a little bit tonight. I know you expected to see Carrie, but you get me tonight. So wanted to say, hey, everybody, it's Melissa McKinnon, Vice President of the P T A. I just wanted to say thank you for all of those amazing students that did a great job with their updates from Center and Hall. Um, so I'm just here to give a few updates. First up, the Glow Night was a huge success. We had sixty-three families attend, which is far more than we could have ever imagined. So a massive thank you to everybody who came out and all of the volunteers who helped make this event possible. It couldn't have happened without you. Uh, currently, we have our Flower Power Fundraiser, which helps fund programs and events for our students. They're high-quality flowers and bulbs with a hundred percent grow guarantee. Uh, perfect for spring planting and Mother's Day gifts. How it works, you shop a beautiful selection of flower bulbs, seeds, and plants. Fifty percent of every purchase goes directly to the P T A. Orders ship directly to your home. No hassle, no pickup required. Um, and so that's going on right now. We are actually looking for volunteers to bake or donate for our staff treat bar on Monday, March twenty-fourth. To sign up, please use the link found in the digital backpack via email to P T, P T A members or on our Facebook page. If you're not a member of our Facebook page, please join now because there's important updates. Actually, if you were at the Glow Night, there's pictures that our photographer took of that night on there. He actually took a lot of pictures and they came out really amazing. Uh, so check that out. We are actually also hosting a Taylor Swift Karaoke Night on Friday, April twenty-eighth at H M S from six to eight. Doors open at five-thirty. It's twenty dollars per family. We can't wait to dance and sing the night away with you all. Our next P T A meeting is Thursday, March twenty-seventh at six o'clock at the Wellington Public Library. We hope you can join us for all of our upcoming event planning. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to us at willingtonpta@gmail.com. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Melissa.
Thanks.
We appreciate you. All right, um, Agenda Item Five is the Chairperson Report. We have a whole lot to talk about tonight, so I will keep it very brief. Um, we are working our way here through budget season. As everyone knows, the Board of Finance will be meeting this Thursday, the thirteenth, at seven P M to do a discussion about the presentations they have received thus far from the various groups here in town. Um, I wanted to take a quick second to say that at the Board of Finance meeting, when the Board of Education budget was presented, one of the members of the Board of Finance recommended that we eliminate some staff positions. And that is far from my mind as a possibility always, but I did just want to touch on something quickly about that. If you are interested in improved test scores and the mental wellness of our students, then that is the last thing you're going to do. Um, so please come and show your support for our staff, our small class sizes, our programs, our students, and everything that we're trying to do so that all students in Wellington get the best education possible by showing up at some of these meetings, emailing and asking questions, um, or reaching out any other way you can think of to get ahold of us because what you think matters and what you say definitely impacts everyone around you. So thank you for that. Um, next up, we have President to Speak. There's nobody in the room. Do we have anyone online you can? Okay, hi, Jamie, go ahead. Let's get you on the media first.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Jamie Coprec. I'm at seventy-nine Common Road. Um, I actually just wanted to come on because my son brought home, he's in fourth grade. Um, he brought a Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts Poets Journal, and I just happened to be kind of like thumbing through because I like to see what he does. And the poem I opened up to was just, I don't know, in my opinion, it was a little dark for nine-year-olds. Um, it, um, it's, it's brief, so I'll just read it quick, but it says, um, "It's just a game. We are told by those who cannot play it unless it is play. For us, it is war, often desperate and without reason. We throw our body against another body. We learn to hate each other, hate the ball, hate the hoop, hate the fallen snow, hate our clumsy hands, hate our thirsty mouths. When we drink from the fountain, we hate our fathers, we hate our mothers, we hate our face in the mirror. We play basketball because we want to separate love from hate and because we know how to keep score." And then like some of the questions following it, because it's like an activity, um, like workbook type thing. It is asking them to, um, write each item the players hate under the appropriate category, like parts of the body, people, objects, or things, and what is a literal, uh, excuse me, literal definition of war? And I don't know, I just found this to be dark, and I spoke to my, um, son about it because I know they don't touch on every poem um, in this book, and they definitely did that one, and I had to kind of explain to him what it was talking about because he found it like a little dark too. Um, I don't know, and I just was wondering like if the, you know, teachers have choice in this because I was told by another parent that one of the teachers seemed a little uncomfortable about it as well, like they didn't love it. Um, so yeah, I don't know, I just, the rest of the poems in here were weird. There were some that were a little odd, but, um, that one was just a little dark to me, and I just hope by the time my daughter gets to fourth grade, this could maybe be skipped. That's all. And all the fourth graders that spoke tonight did a wonderful job. Great job, guys.
Thanks, Jamie. I hope you've reached out to your student's classroom teacher about that. First off, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Okay, all right then, you'll have another opportunity at the end of our meeting if you would like to do so then. Um, Communications, I think we always receive everything all together. Does anyone have anything to report?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to say is I actually sent a communication out, which I did a new budget snapshot. I shared that with you. It's usually a report on what we receive in. Um, and so I just shared the budget snapshot with you. That was a little bit different. Uh, and that was how we, we shared the information with Board of Finance. It's out on Facebook. It's all over.
That's great. Very helpful, especially if somebody needs like a quick touch-up on what exactly is going on and it's up to date. So no worries about working your way through drafts. Okay, uh, Item Eight is the Superintendent Report, kicking off the Student Performance Review. Focus on our disciplinary data.
Yeah, so tonight's, uh, it was only discipline data this month. Um, and I had mentioned that we were going to update this grid and kind of clean it up for what were, where we saw some overlap. Um, and so both principals and I worked through this. So there's, uh, really what we've done now, bus referrals are the only spot on center schools where it's going to be specific to a bus referral. What I will tell you is there could be a bus referral that could have physical aggression that will then fall under physical aggression. The only items that will fall under bus referral are kind of specific things like that can happen on a bus. You're not sitting in your seat, you're crawling under seats, things like that, but if it falls under something else just for us to be able to have conversations and be able to see the data, um, it will fall someplace else. Um, and so that was, uh, we took out like recess referrals, cafeteria referrals. They can still see that information and that they can, you know, they have a sense of, you know, where things are happening. But just from our picture, it was kind of weird because next in, in parentheses, we had, you know, physical aggression when right below there's finished physical aggression. So you couldn't tell how many were, were for each item. Um, so this month you can see the update that's there. We'll keep, keep updating this. And remember, when you see something like, uh, physical aggression or inappropriate language, some of those things, especially like where you see the thirteen, um, for inappropriate language, that might be a student who is struggling, who might have four or five referrals. Not always, but it's something that, that's how we track things. We're only going to report it, um, once to you. Um, because there could be a student that could have a referral every day in this and it could skew your data to twenty-five. Um, and those are students obviously that have a plan, that parents are involved. Their student assistance team might be involved, obviously, at least as the principals involved, classroom teachers involved. So some of those things that I just want to, as we talk through it, those are things where we will leave one instance in there, one incident, but the other fifteen or whatever is that for that one student are not going to show up, so it doesn't skew your data. All right? Um, the other thing that we are really watching is when we see anything bullying, this is again, both of, of schools, is that one, even though, so when you see two there, um, on the December day, I'm reading that right, two or three, I'm not reading that right, three. Um, two of those might be in the same situation. So John and I might both be bullying Sam. It's the same incident, but they're two different people. So we're reporting out that the number of individuals that there is verified bullying. Okay? So we've done the same cleanup for Hall. They have a few more items that, um, they get to, but, uh, we've taken out where the overlap was, and I basically said it should fall under one of these items. So, um, there could be inappropriate language in defiance, but we're going to put it under defiance because that's, it's, that's the primary. Um, you know, when you see something like inappropriate language, that might be somebody talking to a friend down the hallway, you know, using, using inappropriate words. Um, abusive language would be towards someone. So we're trying to streamline this a little bit, so it's a little bit clearer and there's no overlap. They have a lot more detail in their reporting system. They have a, a, a program called Swiss. So it allows them to see where the most referrals are happening, if they're on the bus, the time of day, um, if it's repeat students, all of those things. They can see that information. This is just big picture, what's going on, and you can see that defiance piece again is where we're seeing, um, the most right now. Um, and that's something that they're, they're aware of. This is not a shock to them. And again, there could be two or three students that, you know, have repeats, but they're not going to repeat them there. Okay? Questions about the student discipline data that's there this month?
Are you going to make this? Are you going to share this?
Yeah, I think I did. Did I not share this one? Is it down the folder?
I don't know. I didn't check the folder folder.
Okay, I will, I will make sure I add this to that, yep.
It might be, it might be.
Looked like November was a little rough at both schools. December for Center.
Got New Year.
Yeah, right, I figured about the vacation time and then the long winter and not being able to get outside.
And all those things.
This sounds silly, but sometimes it's, sometimes it's like literally what is the latest TikTok challenge? And how does it impact school? They don't have their phones, but they're surely repeating things that they're seeing. Um, and sometimes those things are not so appropriate for school. And so you might see a blip and, but again, we can explain those things. I might not be able to right off the cuff, but if I said, hey, Mary Kay, what's going on with this? She can say, we know what's going on. Here's the situation. The student's assistant team has met with the student or the parents come in, or all of the above, or there was a P P T because it was special education related. Could be all of those things, but we are very aware of the students. And I will make sure I share this.
Yeah, I just checked. So that's, I have to request access for that and for the, um, five-three reporters. That's really hot.
I thought I shared that whole folder.
Now I have math, reading, and K through four.
Okay, five-three reporters, five-three, I didn't even try to put them in.
Now, how do you gather this data? Does the principal give it to you?
So I have them looking at their Swiss data and then entering it into this spreadsheet. Um, and so they're making decisions when they see, um, multiple things. What is the primary? So if the defiance starts and that's the first thing, and then there's cursing act alerts, it's the defiance is the primary.
So if somebody say lies about their cellphone, is it going to be under a cellphone or would that be under a different section?
It'll fall under cellphone. Yeah, so there could be, they can actually do multiple codes. They're doing, they're doing this as the primary code.
Okay.
You wouldn't know, the lying comes because of the cellphone.
Right.
And so if there is a cellphone there, they're addressing it as a cellphone. When they look at the, um, the Swiss data, they can see like a primary code with, you know, this is coded as primaries. You know, the cellphone, there was also, I'm just going to add a bunch here, defiance and support nation. There was inappropriate language and there was disrespect, right? There could be multiple things in there. Primary is starting with the cellphone. And typically, that's not going to happen. Typically, it is going to be one on occasion though. And again, there could be a student that has some sort of, you know, issue. And when it's a bigger issue, it's handled a lot different. Oh, you know, there's, there's, it might be parent meetings that come in. There might, it might just not be a quick pick-up your phone, cellphone call. It might be, we're going to create a plan. Um, there's other things that go into it other than just a kid that turns over their cellphone in life.
One thing I think is really good is when there is bullying, they develop a safety, at least at the middle school.
Both schools do.
Both schools do.
Yeah.
So that there is a plan where they separate the children and set up guidelines of how they will treat one another and everybody kind of signs off together on it.
And it's a, it's a requirement of both sides.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, I think this is cleaner. Hopefully that helps them. I'll share that with you. Uh, so let me get through staffing. So we hired a second shift custodian, um, Dwayne Rowe for Center School. He's going to be starting next week, so that's exciting. I have got to say, um, we've had a whole, uh, in that position for a bit of time now. And Travis Hart and Andy Wonach, who are the night shift custodians for Hall School, they have sixty thousand square feet to clean. Um, and they've basically been rotating, coming over every night and spending some time in Center School to make sure that things were taken care of. Um, it wasn't perfect, but those guys just did it. Uh, they, you know, not complaining. Um, they were, every time I see them, I thank them for that. I will treat them to dinner um, once this other person starts, but just want to give them a shout-out because it's things like that when, where people don't see those things. It doesn't show up in a paycheck. Uh, it's not additional hours, although I did authorize additional hours on a Saturday or overtime if the building needed it. Um, but they, they can say no to those things. And they just, they just did it, and I just greatly appreciate their help with that. So I'm excited for the new person to start, as are they. Um, but thanks to those guys for helping out. Uh, we had a, a center school preschool paraprofessional. Uh we had a a center school preschool paraprofessional, Kirsten Morrell, she resigned. Um and because of where we are in the year and uh. Our number of paraprofessionals we need for next year's budget, we're actually just going to bring in a sub for the remainder of the year to cover the rest of the year. Um because we were gonna be over on the number of paraprofessionals we need next year, no one's gonna come in for a two-month job. Uh and so we can we ma- we can manage that and and make it work. So that's good. Um and then I will say the biggest news in the night. Um is I uh. Know that Mary Kate DeShaun is today. She announced her retirement. Um so the middle school principal today. Um she's retiring at the end of the school year. She's been with us for five years. Um she has been in in education for thirty-seven, thirty-five, have been in Connecticut. Um we're gonna miss her, um but I know that yeah, obviously, when you're in education that long, it's well deserved. Um I wish her good luck. Uh we are. Already hopping. Uh we have a posting ready to go. Uh I had known in advance. Um but I was not gonna say anything until she officially uh announced and she did that today. She told her staff, so word will be getting out. Um so I have uh. The full, you know, search criteria, dates, things, um site visits, all those things. We're we're gonna be working on that. Um applications are gonna open tomorrow. Um so we'll be posting right right away, but obviously again, um. It's a it's a loss for us. I appreciate what she's done over the last five years. Um the the challenge through COVID, um but. Good for her. Can't say I'm not a little bit jealous. So congrats to her. Um. The next item is center school sidewalks, and this is a little bit of a combo thing. Stealing the two things. One, I wanna show you this. Okay, so um I met with Troy, Public Works Director. Um to discuss the drainage at Center School and it's impacting all the areas in the red. So we have the drop-off pickup. Area which is here. Um we have the. Front sidewalk section here and then there is. This is not necessarily sidewalk, but the the water is running off of this field here. Uh the front grass and into this area and um where we were having the problem. Um is, you know, the colder nights, it was melting and then it's refreezing. And we're just loading things up with sand and salt. The in this upper section, it you you do the snow and then it just melts and it just you guys skate on it. Matt's out there chiseling and and breaking things down. This uh section here in front of this whole wing is actually lower. Um than the ground level, so it doesn't, it can't run off. Um and then this section here. Uh there are no sewer grates on Old Farms Road until you get down to the firehouse. So we talked about solutions. So solution one, this upper drop-off area as a priority, Troy is going to, I met with him. Um he's gonna help us this summer. Basically put some stone along the edge of the red on both sides. He'll dig out a trench on both sides, put some stone. And then we'll put us a drainage system that's gonna actually run out towards the picnic table here. It's about sixty feet. And we can drain, it will help drain into the the woods. Um he's also gonna do this that section next to the stairs. So a lot of this is running from the upper parking lot. There's no, there's, you know, some of it just drains into the um little pool that's there. Um but, you know, on a rainy day, this floods and, you know, Matt's out there trying to brush water away. So kids can actually walk out to the cars and not um need waiters. The section that's longer here, we don't have a solution for. This is a bigger project. You have to raise up your your grade of your sidewalks. They sunk over the years. This is again, big picture, what are we gonna do with the buildings? That's something that would have to be addressed. It's not used a lot. We do put salt on it, it melts, but it's something that we take care of. Um and then we're in the lower section here, we're actually trying to sandbag this. So if you see uh there's like these. There's two things you can do. Is one, you can put a line of sandbags to try and direct the water, so it actually goes more this way. Because once it gets lower, it'll run along this curb. We actually had a parent fall over here because of the ice. Um if we can direct it that way. And so we're working on that. The other thing is like there's these. They like fill up when it rains, they fill up and they they. Hold the water and then directs it, or you can use the sandbag. So we're gonna try both solutions. Um. I wanted to share that with you. The other piece that was part of this heavy snow or the snow and the rain we had. Was that we had our first leaks that we've had in the building in a long while. Um and the reason why is, and I'll show you, is you can see on the roof, it's our flat roof with the roof drains. This section here above the library and this is the uh above the kitchen. Um that's where we're having issues. And what happens is when the roof drains with all the heavy snow and the rain came on top of it, it rained a bunch in that snowstorm, if you remember. Um the water had no place to go. So it sits and then it pushes to the edges and find seams and just runs. So there's not a heck of a lot you can do with that. It is also the first time we've ever had a leak in the upper wing, which is a newer roof. So this is not just like a broken roof sys- situation. It is. Really just the combination of that snow followed by a torrent on top. What I'll tell you is, this last heavy rain we had last week, where all the snow was off the roof, not one drop. So that tells you, it's just a situation where when we get that snowfall and the water has nowhere to go. Even with Matt shoveling sections, when we shove so shovel out the roof drains. It's still, there's just so much water and and moisture on the roof. It's it's a channel. So I share that because I always tell you that, you know, the roof is not leaking. This is it's time where it has. Um. We will not change our ceiling tiles, which are stained now, you can see it, until we believe we're done with snow, but I hope we're done with snow. And then we'll replace those ceiling tiles, but we're we're aware of that that mess and we'll keep you kind of in the loop with that one. I will always say thanks to Public Works. They helped us out with a bunch of stuff. They can put that drainage in formidable. We don't pay for their time, we pay for the materials. Or, you know, us to bring somebody in and put a machine over there would cost us support and so they're gonna help us though with that. Questions about any of those things?
I just had a question about. So that longer area there, does that affect anything during uh uh fire drills or?
Every sidewalk does in a fire drill, yes. Um they have deep snow um paths. Basically, if if we have deep snow, they would line up here, but they can't when there's deep snow because they're elementary kids and they would have struggles standing out there. So they actually walk all the way around the building. They ran a fire drill the other day when this was icy. They actually just put a fire sign up at the door and said, fire, you have to go a different way, uh which is actually really good practice. Um for any district that doesn't do that, it's really good practice. Um but we still spend a lot of money on cell phone on those sidewalks. Um and it's it's intentional. Uh we've had this side uh this sidewalk right at the front entrance sink. Uh and we actually were able to have somebody come in and jack it up and throw some fill in. But then it starts to unbalance a little bit and that's working correct, cuz they're actually not that thick. Um this whole section really, long term, should be pulled out and and redone. Kind of like we did a hall that in the back section where they did it. That section could be something where where you could spend some money.
And the roofs, are they the ones that had been patched?
Yeah, so this section right here is what we'll call the new roof, even though it's ten years old now.
Yeah.
The rest of this is all the older section. And typically, where we were seeing lots of leaks was here. That's not where we saw the leaks this time. The leaks were actually right in by this big unit here. And so that's where what we're we're checking is now to see if we can seal, just in case we get a heavy snowfall or rain. It's, you know, if we can seal something off, we will. Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing that. Um. And then I just wanna share a couple things that for dates coming up. We have conferences, uh the twenty-first. Um that's our first time we're ever running spring conferences. I don't know the numbers yet. I will report that out to you when once I have the final numbers. I'm curious to see how many conferences we have. Uh again, the way we pitched it was if a parent wants a conference, they're gonna get a conference. And then teachers can re- or teams can request a conference if they want one as well. They're concerned about. Um you know, where students at. Sometimes it turns out that there's been ongoing meetings and intermediate conferences. So I will be curious to see how many spring conferences we have. Anytime not used during conferences will be professional development. Um so that's coming up on the twenty-first. They mentioned the Evening of the Arts and um The Lion King are both coming up. So uh exciting stuff going on over the next couple of months. Um so there's just a couple dates.
Kind of a little question to be sure. Um so as far as staffing goes. Do you receive resignation letters from anybody who goes? So. What they do on EO is Sharon will share the letters with the board. I don't know if it's something that this board's interested in, but I just thought I'd broach that topic because we're on. Could you have a significant resignation uh or retirement?
Yeah.
So I just didn't know if there's anything that would be of interest to this board, um but it is, it's. Part of our packet of the dice, so it's it's something to see. So I decided to broach that topic here. Um. And now actually, I I knew that there there were leaks in the roof cuz I went to the literacy night and I saw them.
Yeah.
What happened here? Um but that was already addressed, so.
Most of the resignation letters that I get are like two lines. As of this date, I'm resigning. Thank you very much for your for supporting. We also do, we're and we're obligated to do it. I we have some uh a survey that goes out. To get feedback, to see if there's anything that's in there that anybody wants to share. Is there more information? Why are you leaving? Um some people fill it out, some people don't. I can't require them to do it. Um I've never gotten anything out of it that I didn't know already or that our principal didn't know already. So. And I do think we have an accept- accepting resignation policy that I I don't know. Uh I can look at it, see what it is.
Yeah, the exit um survey is information. I think that's more valuable than just the.
And that's something if I saw trends, I would share with you. Like hey, this is something else, you know, cuz every now and then you're gonna get somebody that's unhappy and they're gonna go someplace else. Um where we, when we made the changes uh a couple of years ago now at this point, when we when we announced the. The contract and we made, we moved people's staffs and things, if you remember that. We did that because the exit survey data that we were getting was, I'm going someplace else. I was on this step. It's silliness cuz I'm making the same amount of money as someone with half the experience and I'm gonna make this much more when I go someplace else. That's why we addressed it. So you get that information, then we're proactive about it, of how we deal with it now. Um and that's why I said when I look for looking for trends, that's why what we're doing.
Those are important to share, I know, especially with such a um teacher shortage and folks moving around distant so often. Just to kind of keep coming out, that's all good to know. Okay, um thank you for all of that interesting information. Let's look at some numbers here with item.
Alright, so this is um. Financial reports, the report has a couple funky things and a couple big things. First, Center School. Um we were having some issues with a grant, the way it was set up in the system. Um and so we have some money for a teacher's salary that we had to unencumber. To be able to use all of the grants and then the balance, which is exactly how we set it up in the budget. And then the balance would come from the board of the budget. So. Do you see a balance remaining for Center School of one hundred and thirteen? It's actually probably closer to sixty-nine thousand. Um and that's the balance of the teacher's um salary. That will be corrected next meeting. Uh but they had to unencumber it to make it to and to get through the grants. Um it was sort of, it was a Tyler Technologies issue. They had minor things, otherwise they uncovered some funds with some, you know, minor maintenance repairs, a couple, we had some lights out in the back. Um that were being fixed, general supplies. Uh Hall School had uh heating repairs that were done. Uh they had a couple things that were uh switches, like you can turn your heat on and off. That should never happen. Um that was, you know, rigged years ago. I learned about it, you need to fix that. So we had three of those systems. Um that are being fixed now that they actually operate on a thermostat. Thinking about someone walks away on a really cold day and they've turned their heat off because they're, they can turn the blow off, blow off of the switch. There's no heat in that room and it's on the exterior wall. We know what's gonna happen. So that's being fixed, uh when I heard, learned about that. Um and then they had some minor repairs in general supplies as well. Um program three is the the big news and the little wishy-washy, I'll say. We got our first excess cost payment uh came in, it was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um we're expecting at least another hundred minimum. Uh it may be up to a hundred and eighty. And if you saw the government veto what had gone through for the additional forty million for special ed. And then they came to an agreement and it went through. It was not reflected. What they haven't said yet. Is that we have increases in our special education costs this year. Those are not calculated in how much money we're supposed to get. So if we get seventy-eight percent, we'll get around one eighty. Okay? That's what I think. That's our calculation, an additional hundred and eighty thousand, which would be great. If they do the correction, meaning uh our costs went up and they now give us seventy-eight percent of our added costs. It's gonna be overwhelming. So again, it's still a shortfall. But that because you can see the shortfall of two fifty there, but that wouldn't be a bad thing. So if we get two hundred thousand dollars, we only have a shortfall only of that fifty thousand dollars in special education. Hope that makes sense. Um. C S D E has not communicated any of that yet. They have not said if there's going to be adjustments to funding amounts. Due to the forty million. All that they said was there would be a change in the percentage that you're getting. And here's, they gave the prediction of what those percentages or what the amounts would be. Well, that amount is not our old amount. Not the increases that we've got. Okay? Um minimal change, transportation, health services, minimal change. We had a little bit of PD that was uh encumbered. Nothing to utilities. The facilities director is still there in in program eight. Um we encumbered, so we have Microsoft licenses that we pay for our uh machines. And so we paid those Microsoft licenses and then minimal change in the fringe at this point in time. So again. It's showing us that we have a hundred and eighty-one thousand. Makes me a little more comfortable this month than I have seen, uh because I predicted again that would. The um we would have two hundred and thirty-one thousand. Uh and and we're very close to that. If you take off the salary. And then add the money back in that we're gonna get for the next excess cost, that was about where we were gonna be. And we've held off on a couple things, so we'll be able to actually make sure that people need whatever they need for the remainder of the year they get. I am being cautious until I get a communication from the state about that second payment. Cuz that excess cost payment is is a big deal.
Good news and squishy squashing.
Yeah.
Back to special end number. So you said we got a payment of two fifty.
Yeah.
You would anticipate another one of about, let's just say it's one eighty, so it's four thirty. So that number. Is what percentage of excess cost? Is that the seventy-eight percent, that the four thirty number?
The seventy-eight percent is the is the another one eighty.
Okay.
And that is on our old number.
Right, but I'm just trying to figure out what what new number the state is calculating for us because it's never anything. It's not what it should be and it's never in the system, so I'm just trying to keep up with what.
Right.
What percentage reimbursement they're giving.
Yeah, and they. Have not addressed that throughout any of this. They've not said. Hey, cuz we update in March, every district, if you have updated costs or special education, you put it in the system and they adjust the excess cost payment on the final payment. They haven't said they're gonna, how that's gonna happen. We have to, we have to put the changes in, but they haven't said how it's gonna impact your, what you're gonna get back. So they may say, oh, for us, it might only look like we get seventy percent back because our costs went up, right? But we know our our number. Remember the, again, that's two fifty in the hole today. You've already transferred a a couple hundred thousand there. So we were over big time, but again, we're covering it in ways that we could within the budget. The bus payment was huge, the non-lapsing fund was huge and the health insurance. Um where we got lucky, where people just waived it and there was some some funds there. It's, I I I'm feeling confident about that. But it will be interesting to see where it lands.
Yeah.
The other piece that I'll say just about special education, um and I think I forwarded this to all of you. Um Tammy Nucio, our state rep, had asked me, and she asked superintendents of in the region that she works with. Um for some special education data and I gave her. Feedback on special education and just said, okay, here's some things that need to change and just explain the excess cost example that I've given to you in your budget packet. Um and hoping that there may be consideration for changes to that in the future.
Well, and since we're talking about numbers, I really wanted to ask, uh is there any update on the playground research?
I'm waiting for, um we have two quotes that 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 are supposed to be written. I have to check in with Matt. I have to check in with Matt and see if the third ones come in and then I'll walk through all three of them. Yeah.
So at this point, do you think we'll be able to um fill up our non-lapsing fund at the end of the year?
Fill it? No. Do I think we're? I was worried if we're gonna be able to put some money into it or not, and I think. With what I have open right now, knowing, you know, what what is in the budget and what people have requested. You know, some of the things like art may not be encumbered, like this pumping of the septic, things like that, couple thousand dollar things. I will tell you right now, there's a couple of projects, heating, electrical, things that are on my radar. That may need to be taken care of that I've held off on because.
With this year's budget, yeah.
And without having to go ask the town as part of the million dollars, if that makes sense. Um, things like, remember we talked about flashing sign, schools on sign. That's on my priority list. I have that priority list developed. I don't think we'll spend all of that money. But there's still, I mean, there's, and I'm gonna say this, it's March eleventh. This could change tomorrow with one email, right? We experienced it that last year. Um, as of today, I feel a lot more confident seeing the numbers where they are. And I have not frozen the budget all year long. I've been conservative. I say it all the time, so.
All good things, all good things, all good things. Thank you for that. Um, alright, agenda item ten is new business. We have a whole bunch of meeting minutes to approve. Does anybody want?
Um, I think motion of the Williamson Board of Education approved the following, the regular meeting minutes from February eleven twenty twenty five. The budget workshop meeting minutes from our fourth budget workshop from February eleven twenty twenty five. The special meeting minutes from February nineteenth twenty twenty five, the policy subcommittee meeting minutes from February twenty sixth and twenty fifth.
Second.
Second.
Did anybody have any edits or comments that you need to have addressed at this time? Jen, is it fine for you? Everything's good. Okay, uh, if you're in favor of this motion, please say aye.
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 Done, great. Okay, we're passing that right on. Thank you. Okay, um, next we're gonna talk about the W E A twenty twenty five, twenty twenty eight contract stipends. That came out of the contract negotiations and um a committee was sworn to talk about and create these stipends. Just because that seemed to make more sense during the negotiation process. So that's attachment six in your packet. Would you wanna go over any specific, Mr. Steve?
I I I'll just do a quick high level. Um, so these stipend positions are the extraduty responsibilities that. Are not part of someone's contract. This is extra work, so they get uh an extra stipend. I have the ability to fill these or not fill these, uh, but I cannot add stipends uh. But I couldn't add them if if in the past. Now I can, um, but there has to be money for that. Um, the adjustments that are in here now, they align with our expectations and the number of hours to complete the tasks. Um, and with these stipend amount, and so some of our stipends, I'm gonna tell you, were way, way out of uh alignment. Um, and others needed minimal increase. And so the committee went through and said, where are the needs? Where are we way off? What needs to be adjusted? Um, and so the joint group, which is uh, it was Brianna and myself and um. W E A had had some teachers there to go through them. Um, and they have approved this now already at their union meeting. Um, and so this comes to you um and requires a vote and this would get then go into the contract. The pieces where I will tell you where you see significant bumps are pieces where we have. When you look at the num sheer number of hours that that position takes. It is equivalent to the dollar amount. And oftentimes in these positions, people will do more than if I were gonna pay them their per diem. It'd be, this is a fraction of that cost. Um, one where I will tell you that we where we were way, way out of alignment was the athletic director. Um, that was one that I really um proposed that we change. Um, there are uh middle school athletic directors making five thousand dollars as a stipend. Um, bigger schools obviously can have that as a position. We're not big enough to do that. That person is doing a lot of meetings, a lot of scheduling, a lot of, you know, referees, transportation, they're doing a lot of work. We also want that person to be available around our games. Um, and uh the current person that's doing that has done that for us. That's not why I'm advocating for the increase. I'm advocating for it because we couldn't fill that in the past. Because the 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 amount of time was not even close to what the work level was. And so, um, they got a bump, you can see from twenty four, twenty five. See twenty five, twenty six, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty seven, twenty eight, bigger increase than what other, most others received. So that was one that I was uh advocating for. Um, and then the other one that really came into uh our our conversation were the the musical play. Um, which we know the number, sheer number of hours. Where this is gonna be now in line, will other districts pay? Um, it may be more than what other districts pay, but where you see another district paying less. There will also be an assistant director making just as much money. So where someone else might pay three, you know, two twenty five hundred dollars, there's two times twenty five hundred dollars. We're only paying one person. Um, and so I really do think now what's in here uh makes sense. The last one I'm gonna highlight is the P M T trainer. That's our physical management training. It's it's related to special education. Um, it's legally required for crisis team members to have that training. And to send somebody out to go do it on, you know, outside agency is very expensive. We have someone in-house that is a a legal trainer for a program, uh, but it requires her to do some extra work. Preparation materials and it's outside the contractual day. So she puts on that. So that's a new position that wasn't here before. So really those those are the highlights of, you know, some of the big adjustments. Pretty much everything else that's there has been there for. Five, yeah, Sam.
Are these prices for a year or?
Yes.
And then can you explain to me what the chairs do, like the math chairs?
Yes.
Of that.
So our professional development committee meets um ten times a year. We meet monthly to plan professional development. There are long meetings. They're all required to attend those meetings. And then they're also required outside of those meetings to share any curricular um. Items, need professional development, any of those things. So when we bring in a new math program or we bring in a new uh social study program or a new. E L I program, those are our primary people that are, you know, hopefully supported by principals. That are leading professional development and so those extra hours that would not be part of their job.
Kind of like a department head?
It is very much like a department. They're not admin, they're not evaluators, but they're they're doing, so. For again, for the amount of money that they're being paid, the uh additional ten hour meeting, ten hours worth of meetings. Is typical for that, you know, that pay. But they're doing, again, doing things beyond what that expectation is. They might be going to lead professional development in-house. And planning a three hour professional development in-house takes time. And so if they're losing some of their planning time to do that. And they're under their playing time, this makes up for it.
And then where is this in our our budget? Is this in the, where's where's this one?
Uh, I can't tell you exactly what program it is. One, two, three, four, five. Six, it's in the professional development one.
Is it labeled as stipends or?
It is, it is labeled as stipends and team leaders. It and that encompasses everything. The only ones that are not in there are the coaches because those fall into um hall school. Clubs fall into hall school. All of the others, I believe, this is just how Donald's got it broken out in the budget, but they're all balanced out in the budget. When I built your budget this year, I planned for increases. I will tell you, this is higher than what I planned for. But not in a way that we couldn't cover it. It's it's a reasonable difference. I'm talking to a thousand dollars.
So are all of these singles except for like the coach has eight in parentheses, that means there's eight coaches?
Right, soccer, soccer, basketball, basketball, cheerleading, cross country, baseball, softball.
But all the other ones?
So one athletic director, one chamber choir, correct? Those are all one. When you see math chair, there's one for, whenever it says C E S and H M S, there there's one for for each.
Right, and then team leaders, that's fourteen in total, so like seven and seven.
Correct, and so it's um when they have their, and that's how they get their work done in a small district. Um, where they can require, they have to come and do those meetings and we always fill those. So there's a kindergarten team leader meeting. Uh, or there's a building council or team leaders meeting. Those groups come together to to make decisions as a building together.
So are these numbers, would it be like for a coach, for example, would it be eight times whatever that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, each coach makes sixteen hundred dollars in that twenty five, twenty six. Some of our coaches who are parents waive waive that. They don't want the money. In the grand scheme of the time you're putting into it, it's a drop in the bucket. And like this year, I had a a coach say, I don't want the money, please put it towards equipment and I bought. Four hundred dollars of soccer equipment. They have brand new soccer balls next year. They have this, they have Vinnie's, they have a rebounder. That's what that person wanted. I I'm gonna honor that. It doesn't mean we won't, don't have a equipment line, but if someone wants that, that's, we we make sure we honor that.
So can you expand upon what a team leader does versus a chair?
Yes. So the team leader is basically the catch-all. The chair is typically professional development and curriculum related. So when they do a team leader meeting and they're talking about, I'll just give you an example, is is um, they're talking about scheduling right now. They're considering a a a revamp of um center school schedule and looking at um different blocks of time. They meet uh ten, so so at hall, they were meeting twice a month. At center, they meet once a month, but they have additional work that they do. And so they meet monthly basis, on a monthly basis to talk to plan things. If they're gonna bring in, um, like last year when they brought in the N G S S group, um. Oh, for Mystic, whatever, their name, most of their name is escaping me. And they talk about scheduling, they do that together and make sure everyone's got their planning time. The coverage is done. What types of events do they want to bring in? All of those things. They, you know, that's their avenue, so when a principal needs to give information out. They do it, they can do it, the same message through building council or team leaders, and that person then is responsible for bringing that agenda back to their team. And so they share it out. It's the voice for their their team, basically.
So what are the teams?
So.
Team leaders and and.
U A, you have unified arts has a team leader in each in each building. Um, and then basically pre K three, special ed, everybody has a team leader.
Okay. And what is a media facilitator?
The media facilitator is whenever they have additional things for setup. So like, um, and I think this is one is Matt Jensen. He does the whole slideshow, uh, fourth grade promotion ceremony. And he sets up anytime there's a presentation, he's the guy that comes in and sets up all the speakers, brings them the computer, the projector, does all that. Same thing at hall. Um, you go to his success assembly and everything's all set up, promotion ceremony, everything's all set up. It's the media facilitator that's doing that. That's different than the resource teacher, technology teacher. That person is more along the lines of, hey, we got new meeting boards. I have a new teacher, you're getting that stipend, you're gonna go sit down with that person and you're gonna walk them through how to use their meeting board. Yeah, Sam.
How do you determine what's stipend worthy and what's part of somebody's job description?
Uh, ask Brianna what I think about that.
It's outside hours and outside of your um like description. If it takes a lot of extra time outside your workday, then I need to find a lot of extra time.
All I'll find is any. If you can do it as part of your job. So there are certain things that are not stipend worthy that are are worthy tasks that I'll say, Sam, that's a great idea. It's not a stipend we have. I'll pay you additional three hours at your per diem to get that work done. I have the ability to do that. I will tell you, when we went through these negotiations, there are other stipends that were suggested. Um, not by us, by W E A, that they listed off a variety of things and I said, okay, that's their job, that's their job, that's their job. And that's their job. What are we talking about? Are they losing their playing time because of the things and? Um, I would say she was probably a good cop, but I was, not bad cop, but I, that's just about the bottom. It's part of your job. Um, I'm, you're not gonna get a stipend for it.
Yeah, like how do you control, and I'm not. I don't want to portray any negativity or ill, I'm just thinking as somebody who's had employees who. It's human nature sometimes to try and take advantage of certain things. How do you try to? I'm just trying to think of how to phrase this so I don't sound mean. Or seem like I'm trying to say something, because I don't know what all of this is. Um, how do you control? Time-wise, whether it's something that could be done during a regular working hour or somebody's waiting to try to. Push it towards an after hour thing. Do you know what I'm trying to say? Like how is how do you prevent?
I can give you a great example.
Yeah, have you?
So, um, there are certain things where when we bring in, bring in building subs. That I can get a building sub in the curriculum chair and do the work during the day. They're still a curriculum chair and it's part of their school day, but they had to take the time outside of school to do the work to prepare, prepare the the P D. If I did that after school, I'd not only be paying the curriculum chair, but I'd also be paying the teachers to be there. So there are times where. Um, we talk about expectations and we talk about, um, you know, what the task is and the accountability. We intentionally schedule hours now. So if you're a team leader. You have to go to team leader meetings, which are after school. If you're on any of the chairs, you're going to P D A. Professional Development Evaluation Committee. You have to attend those meetings. They're after school hours. Um, any of the clubs, they're after school hours. The student council, um. Some of that work might happen, um, in the day. But some, like, if you're gonna go to a host of dance and you're the person that's there for five hours setting up and cleaning up. Part of the stipend, right? So that, it's things like that. They know that they can't put anything forward that is not gonna. Make sense because if if it's part, could be part of someone's day, because I might be able to make it part of someone's day.
Right.
And I always tell them, like, I want you to ask, because I like to say yes, when you have good ideas or things that we could do within the school day. Um. The clubs can't happen during the school day. They're after school. So there's a lot of things and sometimes it's just a matter of me paying someone their per diem for a couple of hours. To do something that that will, that comes up, that's separate than a stipend. This is more ongoing.
Yeah.
And additional work.
So I feel like it should just be said too, because I can kind of hear some people saying, oh, well, you know. In a perfect world, everyone would volunteer their time for free for the benefit of the community. But you, I understand that you also have to incentivize people wanting to help because people have their own lives. People have, don't want their time to be taken advantage of. So I understand all that. I just feel like I had to.
Yeah.
Verbalize that out loud for some people to hear.
It's outside of the contracted.
Right.
And some of these.
And some people, like you said, that would cut you off, but some people are like, hey, I don't want it, put it towards supplies or put it back or whatever, so, yeah.
I think I would suspect that some of these things are in in other districts, might be a part of the. The expectation, the contract and description of the job thus included in their salary.
Hmm.
Too. So you might have a music, um. Person, teacher, who also is responsible for running a chamber choir or a jazz band as part of their. Um, like actual job in the school, that's part of what they do is run that group. And then that would be like, you would see that dollar amount in their salary.
Yeah, um.
You want me to share it again?
Yeah, can I?
Yeah.
Like, we don't have to have a play or a musical. That's not a requirement of someone that we hire to be our.
Right.
Music person. The fact that we do that is a huge benefit to our students. Um, and it says a lot about what's important to our parents and our families and supporting children in arts in a variety of ways. So that's something that, um, seems appropriate to have a stipend position, someone to support me all of that.
Right, and I agree. It would be interesting, and I don't know how far to get into the weeds, but to, like. Is the stipend in payroll viewed as a bonus? Like, are there different tax implications for a stipend versus?
That's all taxed.
Well, but let me just jump in, cuz I was gonna ask, are they paid in full at the end of the task, or are they done by hour?
It depends on what it is, and they're not done by hour, they're flat rates. If it's, and this is a little convoluted, but if it's a semester club, it's paid at the end of the semester. And we pay stipends in December, and we stay, pay stipends in June. If it's a sport and the person does not work in district, there an outside parent who got certified for us, we pay them at the end of the sport. If they do work for us and it's soccer and they're done in October, they actually get their payment in December with all the other stipends if they work for us. So if you're, and we track this, so like if someone canceled, they're supposed to be running a club and and they cancel five of their clubs. We watch that. We can prorate this stuff.
And you mentioned the um the jazz and the, they come in early, don't they? The teacher's day has begun, he comes in early to do those groups.
And they might go to E O Smith for a full day for tryouts with their kids. Parents are driving them, but that person is there, or wherever it is, RAM, or you know, they're there all day long with that person, with those students. Truly additional hours, um that if you paid the hourly.
Well, I didn't know, I guess part of my thought, my thought process was. Because I remember we've had a conversation before comparing our. Pay rates to other districts. And I know that it's a larger union contract thing, but I didn't know if it was comparable. Taking stipends into consideration. You know what I mean, like, it does that make it more comparable because we are doing these stipends, or like, would it be more beneficial to? No, it's still, okay.
I take these stipends and I match them up to Mansfield, I match them up to Columbia, I ma- I match them to multiple towns. And then, so I take that into consideration, one, because if you're trying to find a coach. And they have to go through a rigmarole to become a coach, if you're not a teacher, um. I match it up, because if you can't find a coach, you're stuck. And if the person next door is doing the same exact middle school sport and they're paying twice the amount, where are you gonna go? Right?
And then like the music director, for example, like, does the music director in Mansfield, is it in their job description, like Brianna was saying, to do X, Y, and Z?
Not in their job description. Extra, to have a stipend to extra hours, correct? And there's a couple districts that are. Very, very high on what they hear things. If you look to high, some of the high school stipends, they get into the ten thousand range.
I'm not familiar with any of it, so I was just, I didn't know about that.
I don't know about you, Brianna, Brianna, but we had good conversations. I feel a lot more comfortable where we're landing with our stipends compared to where they've been many, 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 many years. Um where we were not able to find a staff member to do something, because they're like, you're gonna pay me six hundred bucks to do well. And you get stuck. This, this does, I hope, provide enough incentive to to make sure we're, you know, able to do something.
I think it was really good to have the committee of, from the um WBA of the teachers who do this work. On the committee to help to decide how much would be designated to each area. Rather than a group of board event people who know nothing, you know.
It seemed too like um they all had an opportunity to participate in that conversation too, even though not. Was in the team, ten who were in the back. Their person speaking on their behalf. Um clearly had spoken to many different people from many different groups um within our district, so yes. I did feel like everyone was represented, and. They were very fair in that sometimes they would say, hey, we kind of talked about this, we were thinking about this. You understand, you know, where you might, what you might think about that, what you guys think, kind of a thing. And Phil was very creative too, as always. Um at one point, there was a stipend position recommended. And he was like, okay, but actually that should happen here and here, and the visits jobs that we already pay for. So then, once that discussion happened, kind of like a redispersment or like an official statement of this needs to happen here and here. And he's like, I will talk to the people to get that done. It didn't create a second position, which was always asked for it. But the problem of like who's doing this and it takes so much time was handled right there at the table, so. Um that was good to see too, and we're lucky, we have superintendent could think on a speed like that outside the box. Um because everyone was pleased with the fact that the problem got resolved one way or the other. And I just kept on thinking too, like, for teacher retention, this is important, especially if our salaries are not as competitive as some. Districts um in that region and area. And then, when we need someone to come and join our staff, this might encourage them to come. And join us because they are interested in taking some of these positions, and maybe just that little little bump will um encourage them to join us. So that's pretty important, I think, too.
Last question, have you ever had an incident where you've had a teacher or a staff member who was in a second position and then said. It was too many hours and asked for a per diem addition, or no?
Asked for, no, I think that's the conversation where we get into, especially if it's something really specific. Um that might be a bump, and this is the, this is why, like, when you talk about the chair positions. Especially Unified Arts, like, that's everybody, all Unified Arts, that person might need to spend more time because they've done multiple people. If they couldn't do the work within their hours, I might say, hey, I'll pay you additional um per year per diem, but. Summer, like summer break in the morning, this doesn't, this doesn't fall into that. That's where I would pay additional. But I also weigh that, cuz I know people, hey, if I can make some extra money, I'll do that, but there's always a task, like you have to complete, this is what you're trying to do. But typically, no, we try and keep it reasonable. And when I say closed, um closed, um meaning X number of meetings plus this.
I think there's ways too to keep data or obvious evidence that the work has been done. To, you know, like, there has to be notes for the various meetings. Um that everyone has uh the ability to look at and see, so you can tell what got done at that meeting at that day. And how much time it took and so on, like either there's a yearbook where there's not. You know, so there's no kind of skipping around and calling yourself one of these names and they're not doing the task of the job that you're required to do. I don't think that would be very typical, that somebody would take this stipend and then also be like, oh, hey, but by the way, can I get my per diem too because? Yeah, you got it, you got it.
I don't think it's a, I wouldn't, I'm not looking at it from the perspective of taking advantage of it, I'm looking at it from the perspective of. Right, like, maybe, for example, the music, the musical, uh the director of the musical, I mean, I know that's a lot of work and. You know, it might, it might have been a situation where someone, whoever it was, come up and be like, listen, I spent. Twenty more hours doing this than was really expected, you know. I don't think anybody was taking advantage.
That's the creative problem solving that we do though, so when we get close to showtime. We might say, hey, Spencer, do you need extra time during the day? We'll bring in a sub for you. They'll cover your classes, you now have extra time within your built-in day. But we're not paying you extra, just, again, that's how you, that's communication, how you, you know. Well, like, how do you feel stressed, do you need some support? How can we help?
I think that's like Sam was saying, some folks might be like, yes, but we should volunteer our time and wanna help our students. I think that's kind of where you see that. He spends, Spencer, for example, on the player musical, that's like a zillion hours, and some of it comes down to like. How good he wants it to be. You know what I mean, like, it can be a standard, or he can be like, if I spend a little bit more time on this with this group of kids, this is really gonna be spectacular and for them. So that is kind of, I think, like, the volunteer of the time. That's where you set the standard as the educator and figure out like how you're gonna make it work. And use some of your own time, some of yourself, some of your blood, just wait, just all the things. Did you figure out what program?
No, I, I think I, yeah, I can look further. Did you say PD, Phil? The stipend during PD, or I think they're spread out, or some in.
I'm just curious.
That was a good question. I started looking and then never find it.
You can see team leaders contractual. This is a large portion. If you can see that.
Is it always under salaries, the stipends?
No.
No, okay.
It falls in, it is where, again, this is where it was built years ago, it falls under that a big section right there. And then, when you see in program two. Stipends for coaches, you see it right there as well. Stipends for extra activity clubs, you see it there. But the majority of those curricular and team leader ones are in the other spot. Things you learn, right?
All right, so we have to. Um it is called the, what is it called? Officially, WBA twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight contract stipends.
Motion to approve the WBA twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight contract stipends.
I'll second. Any further questions or discussion? All right, in very agreement, please say aye. Okay, thank you. Hopefully that will work well for the next um. Three, four years. Thank you, teachers.
And it's, you just said teachers, it just made me think, realize that sometimes it's not a teacher-fund stipend. They have the first uh, you know, shot at it if they apply. Uh but if somebody doesn't apply for it, we could fill it with someone from a different union or a different position.
Outside adults too, which is really great. It's nice to have that different group. Okay, um we are gonna move on to some policy review. Specifically, our iPad acceptable use and the meeting process and participation.
So I think you got a copy of these, this is, these first, uh these two policies are are first reads for you. First time you're seeing these, the iPad acceptable use policy is the old name, which is why it's down on your agenda. It is now called the correct Chromebook and iPad Acceptable Use Policy. Um and what we did is we, this was merged between um our old policy. And uh the shipment model policy. The biggest thing that's in here, um and again, sometimes it's the the administrative regs that maybe come to life. These are straight from shipment with some, I would say, minor changes by the committee. Um it talks about, you know, that they're gonna access computer system, you know. If if we ever went remote again, it's in there. There's things about uh us being able to monitor their computers, which we do through Novus. Um we we can shut down, the student conduct is the things that they have to make sure they're following. Um they can't modify their Chromebook, they can't, you know, try and add new things. Um you've got bullying and their misuse, there's an internet safety verb in here. Uh it's a little bit repetitive from another policy, but that's okay. Uh and then there's a student use agreement that is is part of this policy. That would be signed off on by students and families who have not been doing this. Um because it was outdated, this will be done. I will say that the one piece that I think John's looking at is the, if you break your iPad. Um or you break your Chrome, a Chromebook, and it's an accident. We get to, you know, there's, there's a cost to it. If it's intentional, though, the first time, we can change that. So we have that policy in there, the challenge is sometimes people can't pay. Um but we work with those families and figure out how we can make the adjustment. This is one of those peeves of mine, that when I walk down the hallway and I, at the middle school, and I'm like, thank you for carrying your Chromebook, right? Um you know, that hug, uh I appreciate that. So those are, I don't know if. Any of the other policy folks wanna chime in and add into this, but.
No, I just, just wanted to comment that the blending with the shipment policy was done very well. I think it's, I think it really brought everything up to date, and actually makes it very, very clear, so.
Yeah, it's definitely handy to have that.
Any questions about this, or you wanna jump to the next one? So this will come to you again next meeting, uh again, if you have questions, in the meantime, just ask. Just gonna change tabs, the next one is brand new, this is the first read. When we were working on a different policy, there was, this popped up as as meeting conduct. Um and uh we had a conversation at the, at the committee level about changing the name. Instead of meeting conduct, conduct, we changed it to meeting process and participation overview. The nine thousand series is your bylaws of how you operate, and you didn't have any policy that was like this. I will tell you, some of this came out of COVID, and we were actually operating on this already, just because it's the way we do business. Things like, when you post your agenda, you have to say if it's a hybrid meeting, you have to put the um information about how to attend the meeting. Some of this is just about FOI, so the things that are in this policy are are around meeting conduct. There may be a mention of building an agenda, but there's also a separate policy. This, this would be the more general portion of that, the actual of building of the agenda is in a separate policy. So this says we use Robert rule, Robert's rules, but there's a whole policy on Robert's rules. So this gives you that high-level overview. This is tied to shipment, there is a smoking piece that's in the shipment policy, which is kind of amusing, I don't know. There's a section here that if a board member's gonna participate by means of electronic equipment. Jen today loses um her internet, she can't get back in, you don't have to stop your meeting. This lays through what you have, how you manage that, right? If members of the public, we could, we lost our internet. Do we have to uh end the meeting or not? All of those things are in here. Um and it kind of walks you through how, what that process is. This is like, it happens, we would pull up this policy and go, okay, what do we do? Uh we have the ability now to, uh we have to end the meeting, or we can postpone it for up to a certain number of hours. All of that's in here and it's pretty much tied to FOI, which is why they have it. Um it gets into if there's any executive sessions um or special meetings, things like that. What do we wise wanna add? Anything else you wanna add to that?
Um interesting wrinkles in this is if we ever have a meeting that's solely uh online. And someone from the town wants to attend, they can wait within twenty-four hours and we have to provide them a space and equipment to attend the meeting. Uh and that's just an interesting little wrinkle, but I mean, all in all, there's no real surprises in this one. Does the library computers have webcams?
Does it what?
Does the, the library have computers and webcams?
They don't even need a webcam, we just need to provide them access to, they don't even need participation ability. Um they just have to have access to the meeting. But that's, they, and this has been, this was, this is one that came out of the COVID piece. So if we were doing remote meetings, we had to make sure people had access. If someone contacted us, I had to make sure, like, hey, we can give you a laptop, we can set you up there by yourself, you know, we have to figure those things out. So first read again, again, the fact of this came from shipment model policy, that you're getting your money's worth of that subscription. Um I think the committee feels that way, I certainly feel that way, and the reason you can see that is cuz you're talking about, I think, five policies to me. Uh which is great. Go to that.
All right, so as usual, we um look over that and have any questions or comments or whatever, if you can just. Alright, so as usual, if you um, look over that and have any questions or comments or whatever, if you can just zap on. Okay, those two, we just had to do a first check over, right?
Yep.
Okay, so now we're going to scoot down to the old business. Just get to some policies about first um, talk about school repair projects.
So um. I had sent you this in email, but I think it's important that we have a conversation about it um, and and CIP uh, piece two. So. As I mentioned in my email, I had a meeting with uh, DAS, Harvard Administrative Services, who controls the grants. Uh, Tammy Nuccio, who's the state rep, and Jeff Gordon is the senator. Um. Two very important topics that came up, and again, this is talk trying to figure out how Wellington can accomplish some sort of larger scale. Let's see, some sort of larger scale school project, whether it's a a renovation, a new school, or not even considered a renovation, just multiple projects. Um, that costs a lot of money. Um, that need to be done. And so the first piece um. Is is that. Tammy is working with another state rep um, who actually is across the aisle, which is uh. Beneficial because it, um, I think it makes it more, uh, it it promotes it, people liking it more. Um, and that. State rep is put forward some legislative language to to provide districts. An additional fifteen percent in reimbursement on a uh, project. As long as it includes preschool uh, space. Now, there already is currently a law that says you get an additional fifteen percent. If it includes preschool space, but it is only on that preschool space. So big deal, it's on eighteen, eight hundred square feet, sixteen hundred square feet. In a fifty thousand square foot project, that is nothing, right? This new proposed language is on everything. So it would apply to your entire, so take your fifty four percent. Add fifteen percent to that now, right? The other piece of that is the space waiver that you could get, the ten percent. And then so you're talking about the potential for. You're in the seventy nine percent reimbursement rate based upon your rate today. That's huge. That's, that to me is game changer. Now, you know, the other piece of that challenge. Um, was going into referendum. Um, and this is not just about new school, but going into referendum and. Trying to let people know like, hey, really, we we're going to put in a space waiver, but we can't guarantee we're going to get it. Um, Tammy learned. That one town, the town of Sherman. Somehow got permission. And I don't know who permission is from. I believe it's DAS. Um. To basically submit a grant for a very large project. Without town referendum first. They submitted the grant application. And what that allows them to do is find out if they're going to get the space waiver. How much money they're going to get back. And then now they know what the cost is going to be to town. Now that's important because then. If, when you do a referendum, you can say, okay, this is our dollar amount. We're going to build a sixty million dollar building. We're going to do a sixty million dollar renovation project. And it's going to cost the town of Wellington sixteen thou, oh sixteen thousand, that'd be a dream, sixty million dollars, okay? The caveat to this is they have to have a positive referendum, the way they did this in eighteen months. Again. Two great things hand in hand. If this were to be the case. Allow, would allow us to move forward with more information to the town. That would be a little more powerful. Talking about an eighty percent reimbursement is great. Um. But to me. Not without the, the waiver piece. Um, so there would have to be some communication there about what project you're putting for, because you can't say multiple projects. Um. But that was a big downfall to me of how do you put in for a project and not know how much money you're going to get back? That's just crazy. So um. Tammy and I are working on this. I, to be honest with you, um, I just answer her emails and text messages when I get them. And the reason why is. The legislation, she's working on people getting this through and getting the votes. Um, uh. It has to pass. If it doesn't pass, there's no additional fifteen percent. Right? Um. And there's a ton of bills up for that. The second piece is we would also need the permission piece to happen. Um, but the fact they allowed another town to do it and recently. Waits well for us, right? Votes well for us. So. Um, I think those are two important things. The last piece about the school repair project funding that I think is important. Um. And Jen, you might be able to chime in this because I, I didn't get to catch the um, last CIP meeting. Um, I know that it's been on the conversation of we had asked to repeat what we got last year. I don't know that's going to happen, uh, and maybe half of that amount of money. Um, again, because. That money goes into Peter's budget, which quite frankly, I think is unfair. Um, it's kind of like your, your E O smoke, E O Smith budget where all, you don't have a separate budget. All their capital stuff goes into their budget. Um. It would be interesting to see what would happen if, if the town could ever manage a way to do a selectmen's budget. A Board of Education budget, a region nineteen budget, and then a capital budget. And you can have four questions. And what that would do is it wouldn't show a huge increase if you ever wanted to do an increase on Peters where. You know, he's always going to cut CIP because what choice is he given? When you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, there's no way you find that in his general operating budget. You just don't. Um. So I know that CIP is is uh, trying to figure this out. And the proposal I shared with you, I think that was last meeting about doing the long term planning. Um, I don't know that they're going to be able to fund that fully this year. They're going to, you know, put some money in for education, but I think. Long term. That's something that's going to have to be sold. Um, especially if you find something with eighty percent reimbursement and uh, you get through the. You know, approval process for for um, doing the grant first to be able to share the information with the town. Jen, do you have any further update from CIP on that or no?
We haven't had the pick it apart, hash it out. Um. Necessarily meeting yet, but um. What was floated was a million. Um. As opposed to the one point three. And then eight hundred thousand for the town.
And so the challenge again will be that, that uh, eight hundred thousand for the town, I think was thirty thousand in the past. Is that right?
Yeah.
So that's a big jump. And so when you look at Peter's budget, because it's in the selectmen's budget and it goes, oh, there's a thirty percent increase in the selectmen's budget. It's not really in the selectmen's budget. It's CIP. And that's long, it's the long term planning thing that we're trying to accomplish. Um.
There was some.
Go ahead, Jen.
I'm sorry, there was some um, discussion about what you were just talking about separating. Wouldn't it be nice if the budgets were separated because it'd get much more clear and understandable?
Questions. Um, number one, a million dollars from this year, does it carry over?
Absolutely.
So we that, okay. Question number two, was Jim's presentation well received at CIP? The presentation that we, he did for us, um.
I don't know if he did that present, did he do that presentation for CIP, Jen?
We, we had the whirlwind presentation.
Okay. Was it well, was it received well or how did that go?
I, I think there's appetite for discussion about it. Um, we saw it before you guys and it was really, it was, there was a lot. And it was kind of at the end of the meeting, so we, we all were encouraged to look at it and check it out and. See how it fit. But I don't think we had a revisit discussion about it. Specific to our budget this year. I think.
Go ahead, sorry.
I can just keep remembering bits and pieces. I apologize. Our, our. Our goal is to um, look at it in the off season. Um, and see how we can utilize it going forward.
Yeah, so that's a good segue because I think when this came up, when he, he drafted that thought. I mean, we're knee deep in budget process right now. You're not, you're only selling the people that are watching the meetings, right? So if that can be sold in the off season. It's easier for people to understand when we get to budget season, this is why there's so much money. That would be put there. Um, I think they're going to try and propose this. Whatever they can, but it has to be again, within reason. So Peter's budget's not going up, you know? Because that's all people are going to see. They're just going to go, the selectmen's budget is up to thirty five percent. Why is that? Um, and that's. You can't cut the positions in the building. They, they, that's not.
Um, when you talked about compartmentalizing the money. Is that would be part of Jim's plan where everybody had their own savings account? Where they were saving up for their project, the fire. Fire department would have money they were saving toward their fire house, right, with Jim's plan?
Is one, I think he's looking at it as one big pool of money with. Knowing what, that a portion is going to each of those projects.
Okay.
Cause they would all be within a bond or two bonds or three bonds, but the, the point is you're using that, that pocket of money to pay those funds. And again, that's what has to be flushed out. It's. I thought it was important to share with you just because right away. Um, to get the conversation going because we're advocating for a bunch of money to come into, right? We're, we're asking for one point three million for what purpose when we don't have a project? And that's what's very easy for people to say, we don't have a project. But. There's a lot of discussion about, still going on about what do we do? Uh, what do we do with a hundred and seventy kids in a whole school? And uh, you know, if we continue to shrink. Do you run a whole school with a hundred and twenty kids? Like where's? Do you continue to run schools? What's that look like? Um, so it's that long term planning piece.
I think what would be helpful in this situation is to. Take this potential reimbursement rate and apply it to the numbers we already have and then. Look at bonding of that number and what that first payment would be because that's always the biggest. And if that's something that can be covered by the money that gets put aside for education by CIP, that's. That would be a massive hurdle to overcome. We're talking to people, if they're going to look at. You know, how, how are you going to pay for this? Well, we can almost already cover the first payment. If it's a, if it's a lower bond. Uh, the first payment should be significantly lower than what it was.
Yep.
With the, the larger number. Uh. Obviously, we have to make subsequent payments after that, but again, that first one is the toughest.
Right.
But that's also an important thing to remember with the money that is going. Being put aside in CIP for education is that. Eventually, it's going to be used for something. We're hoping it's used for, for this. But if failing this, it's going to be used for something. So it, it's, it's going to go to something. It's important not to. Hack that up as much as possible.
Yeah, I think that was part of the big picture, right? Like it's marked in a solid kind of way, not just a male or a female.
I'm talking outside of Jesus' presentation. I'm talking about as it stands now. Cause there's, there's already talk about only putting in the million instead of the one point three, which you know. It's fine, but I, I wouldn't want to see it go much lower than that because now you're starting to lose out on. This is huge, you're planning, like you see the timetable now. Should this go on your timetable eighteen months? So you've got this CIP cycle and possibly a subsequent CIP cycle or budget cycle, excuse me. Um, to put money in there. Essentially for this stuff, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to start. Turning that now and then risk not having. Enough in there. That's what I'm worried about.
Because you still need to do roofs.
Oh, yes.
Still need to do H vacs, right?
Right, so you know, and everything, there's, there's projects that have to be done and that money could just be. There wouldn't be a bond. You can, it might just have to be, just take it and, and do it.
Do it, yeah.
Okay, so we're just going to have finger crusts a lot about, I don't know.
Finger crust on that one because that was. The best email I've ever seen, phone call and.
I really want to ask like one house soon, but I know that's the ridiculous question because, you know.
I think they're done session, Jim, sorry.
Can we ask like, hey, then your superintendent's group and maybe CEA? For support of such a bill and that might.
They're lobbying for their own things right now. And what really matters is uh. Who's scratching, who's back?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, this is, this is uh, Representative Leeper's proposal. Um, and uh, she's in Fairfield and Southbury. I might be making that up. Um, Jen Leeper, she's the chair of the Education Committee, some chair maybe. Um, and she's on appropriations. Um, so. She's got some power and if, you know, there's some understanding of. It's supporting, so people that are pushing for more precept, well, this is, might be a way to support. This is, there's a lot of pros to it. But there's not going to be. My group advocating for now is not what's going to pass.
That can be helpful. Um, what about testify?
Um.
If we know when, if they do have a testimony time.
I. Think it's the conversations that those state reps and folks are having in the hallways right now and on their own. Hey, I, I like your bill. If you take this out, I'll pass it. Um, and, and then I will vote for yours.
I don't think that hurts when uh, Tammy and Jeff came into town and were at the library and hosted that like. Open conversation meeting. That's what they. Said is a um, really great way to participate and have your voice heard and it helps kind of. Push them along.
To testify, because if we know when it is, maybe we could go testify and.
She said you can also send things ahead and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't know, like, I literally found out about this on Friday and then couldn't find the bill she was, Tammy was referring to and we found it on Monday. Monday, maybe it was later in the day, Friday. Um, and so I want to make sure I know when, it may have already passed. I don't know. I mean, there's so many things that they're receiving testing, you know, people are testifying.
I'm right. Okay, so now we have some, these are all up for um, completion, right?
Next, that's, yeah. Well, if, if the board has want to.
Yes, our discussion. Okay, let's start with our visits to schools, which we have seen before. Um, did anybody have any, I don't know if you received any uh, comments still written in mail, but did anybody want to go over anything again or have questions about that? Alright then, let's move it along.
Alright, I'll make the motion that we'll link to the Board of Education, uh, except policy twelve fifty visits to schools.
Session. No, no in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, that's everybody. Alright, next one. It's about personally owned electronic devices. Again, we've seen this before. Did anybody have anything that you want to change or chalk it up more? Yes, we should, we should first. Okay, let's move.
Make a motion, the Lincoln Board of Education, accept improvement policy fifty one thirty one dot eighty one, personally owned electronic devices.
Second. Okay, discussion. On favor.
Aye.
Alright.
No, thank you. Right, now next is public participation and board meetings.
We, motion, on the motion. I hope that we approve the policy review nine three two five, public participation in board meetings.
Second.
Discussion. This makes official one for like this exact minute. Or at our next meeting.
That one's, there's some approval.
Yeah, there's nobody.
I've got hands raised all day long. Now I have to be like. Okay, great. All in shape, I'm just, I was, please say aye.
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 Great, okay, passing unanimously. Thank you. And welcome to the conversation down in Wellington. Check out that policy, see what things have changed as of this moment exactly right now.
That'll be in the top three of the B B.
Fantastic, okay. Uh, speaking of which, here is present to speak, where you have a few minutes to share your opinions and other thoughts about anything on our agenda.
We can try out our new policy.
Yes, that's why I'm being very specific. Everybody. Oh, we want to study the new policy before you, okay. Still always the more specific about the opinion versus the, whatever. Alright, thank you. Moving on then. Anyone to report on anything to share?
I just wanted to say thank you to the parent for speaking up. And I agree, go to the teacher first, talk to them, but definitely bring things like that to the board. So we can help if we need to. I just, it's not easy for parents to do that and I want more parents to do that.
Definitely. Thank you for that. Jen?
I just wanted to say thank you to MK. That was sad news and obviously I wish her the best. As a parent and a board member, it will be sad to see her go.
I want to echo John's comments and support this cohort in her speaking out. I was one of the people who lobbied for CKLA. And that poem I do think is a bit, a bit advanced for a fourth grader. Yeah. So I, I agree with what John said. I mean, definitely go to your teacher, but this stuff does need to be brought to earth. I mean, because I don't know if anybody could have seen that coming. There's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff in the CKLA, CKLA stuff. And it's, you can't grab everything and that stuff that has to be brought up and has to be pointed out.
I have a comment. I just wanted to thank my other board members and the public for helping me learn because unlike everyone else on this committee, I'm never worked in a school before and I don't have a school-aged child yet. My son's only three years old, so I don't really know about a lot of stuff that you guys know, that maybe you take for granted that, you know, and I don't know. So I just appreciate you helping me learn and participate and feel like being on this board and that's all. Wanted to say about that. So thank you guys. For being patient with me.
Need to, you know, need to learn a bunch of things you do, Sam, you know.
I just wanted to say that. Everyone else that's had kids go through the systems or have worked in a school as a teacher or whatever. And I'm like, I don't know what the heck you guys are talking about.
And it's very valuable for us actually as a board to have the fresh perspective. You ask really great questions a lot of the time and some things like working in the education system, some things for me are very like commonplace. So I know what things mean and what the things are. So it's very helpful when you slow us down and say, okay, but like, what is that? Because I'm sure lots of people are wondering the same thing or could use a refresher. And it's a good reminder sometimes even for me to take the time to slow it down and recognize that like for me, it's my normal language. I would never know what you were talking about at your work. And I would staff you every three seconds and be like, one of those latter is the bottom of my, um, so don't ever feel like what you're asking is silly or unnecessary because I find it valuable every single time, just speaking for me. And I think it helps our group. For me too, so.
Yeah. And I guess for parents too, I mean, I'm sure that it's uncomfortable to get involved in local politics at any aspect, but when you try to ask a question or want to pay attention to the meetings, it's like, you know, I hope that I help represent people who aren't really sure, who are trying to learn, who are interested in seeing, but maybe feel a little bit insecure with like, what's that acronym mean? Or what are you talking about here? Cause I'm here with you guys. So.
Yeah, definitely. And I think that's something kind of charming and maybe great about our group. I think we do try to represent ourselves as open to anyone and encourage everybody too. So that's good. Isn't that what you would want from a board in your town? I think that's really important. Okay. Anybody else want to make the name? If you want to say anything to wrap this up?
I just, I love having the kids come and start the ease each time. And this time was even more special with the thank yous and the bookmarks. You're why we spend every Tuesday once a month plus certain months to to spend time reading things at home and, and preparing and then being here every month. And it brings it right back and it warms my heart to, to see them every month, be excited to share what's going on in their schools with us in the community. And then the appreciation burns my heart as well.
Yeah. This one got me turned up this time. They were so cute.
Thanks, Dan, for sharing that. And you're welcome. That was great. First of all, we'll really miss Mary Kay, but I'm glad for her that she can go be a grandmother and, and enjoy her life. So thank you, Mary Kay. We will be missed. And I also want to thank the custodians who covered for their, who covered that was really good of them to go above and beyond, just like you were saying, so above and beyond what's expected. And welcome the new custodian that will be with them.
Definitely buy memories in my group. Okay. I just was going to remind everybody, of course, budget, budget, budget. My answer is this week at 7:00 PM and I'll be, further meetings, I'm sure, after that. So stay tuned and catch up if you can and try to speak up where you can and ask those questions. It's really important to have public participation. We are ready for a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Eight fifty-five.
Second.
John, Sam, all in favor?